Okay. Okay, no problem. I know, that's actually exciting.
Hello?
Hello? So my destination.
Sure. No gap?
We're going to. Where's the "I"?
It is in the left.
So you can do my. Box out.
We haven't started yet.
Yes, we have.
No, I think it is. We are live, correct? Yes.
Yes, we are.
Addition. There you go.
This has been 4:59 for three minutes. According to the official timepiece, it is now five o'clock in time for the January 18th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission. As a point of reference, this is how they call meeting. We're not meeting on a regular date because of construction going on, so they call it this. So this is just a postponement of the January meeting to today. Please call.
Gillum?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
Bruno?
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the December 13th meeting minutes. Have you read them? Have any concerns, remembrances? Salute. Second. Call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
About the agenda, we will have a report from staff on events that occurred with the planning commission last year under old business. And under new business, we have a discussion about bylaws and meeting times. Next item on the agenda?
Election of Chairman?
The forward is open for nominations.
Motion to nominate Rob Middleton Chairman.
Second. Are there any other nominations? For closed, call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Upstain.
Bruno?
Aye.
Election of Vice Chairman?
Like to nominate Blake Martin.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed, call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Upstain.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
And well, we'll get on the board, we have a special guest tonight, our new mayor, would you care to make any comments?
Uh, no, I'm just here. Hello everybody, and carry on.
Thank you for showing up.
Absolutely. Discussion to repeal ordinance 1714.
Back recording.
Yes.
Yes, so this.
Recognize.
Yes, so James Walden, Harvard, helping out as sort of staff planner with our, you know, planning staff. So this item is before you in relationship to several of the additional items included in the agenda, particularly the preliminary plat of lots one and two for Horizon Edition, the rezon of lot one for Horizon Edition, and also the site plan work. The principal issue is in previous iteration of the master street plan, so in 2019, back up in 2019, Vision Sherwood 24, 2040 was adopted. I think the legislative intent at that time was for that to serve as lanes plan and the master street plan for the city, because it contains both elements on it. When it was adopted, it was adopted by resolution, which is in general practice of how we normally do those sorts of things, because it represents municipal policy. However, there is existing ordinances of adoption for master street plan in the form of, I think, ordinance is 1714, 371, 1736, 1818, 1896, and 20, 2107. So, from a standpoint of cleaning things up, it's probably, I think, you know, you might weigh in on this, but I think it would probably be good to.
I think your analysis is sound.
Yeah, to end up repealing those and sort of reinforcing that the Vision Sherwood 240 is the correct version of the master street. But, that is one aspect of this that relates to those items. However, in that ordinance 1741, it called specifically for a connector street between Indian Bay Drive.
1714.
1714, sorry. That may be a touch of dyslexia. I'm not sure.
You're way too young for that.
Yeah, 1714. It called for a collector or connector street between Indian Bay Drive and Austin Bay Court. And that really, I think principally, it boiled down to two critical issues, one being from a fire safety aspect, that folks were concerned about between those two areas, having if something happened on Brockington, you know, how would emergency services get to that area? Since that time, Brockington's been widened to a four lane by Boulevard, it's highly unlikely at any one time that all four lanes would be blocked for emergency access, particularly because of the median divided. You tend to have a crash on one side or a crash on the other side, not at solid pace. So it's exceedingly unlikely that it would be blocked. So from a fire safety standpoint or emergency response standpoint, that small segment, I think, that concern is alleviated. Additionally, the connection of Maryland has made alternate routes possible, so from a town's standpoint, there are alternate ways to get there. In addition, there are more emergency services that have been placed on the north side of town, so I think that addresses a lot of those concerns. So, I think from a standpoint, is that portion still really necessary as a full street connection? I don't think so from a fire safety aspect. However, I think maintaining a fire access easement across that property in lieu of the street is probably possible. So that's kind of a finding from that standpoint. There is additionally, the sort of the, how it functions as access, because with Brockington being a four lane by Boulevard, part of the, you know, the investment with making that so much, spending so much on a roadway like that, is to preserve the traffic function. That's one of the reasons you put Boulevard roadways in, is you want to manage the access and make sure that it continues to function and flow the traffic flow. So, that connector, when that was put there in 2006, also would provide alternate means of access to ensure necessarily that you wouldn't have to have driveways directly running out onto Brockington, or minimize the number of driveways. And looking at sort of those properties that exist between those two major roads, those roads, Indian Bay and Austin Bay Court, having a series of access easements, I think you could accomplish development through that site with cross access of maybe one to two driveways out of the Brockington, which wouldn't have necessarily had a median break. And so I think from an access standpoint, you know, it may not necessarily be highly necessary. And so, based on all of that information and data and funding, I think it would be appropriate to take action to repeal ordinance 1714, to remove that cross access to connect the connector to Indian Bay and Austin Bay Court.
Just before we get to the public hearing, I just want to clarify, is it simply to repeal 1714, or is it to repeal all of the master street ordinances?
I would, it would be my recommendation that it be inclusive of 371, 1736, 1818, 1896, and 2107.
But the impact, it has to do with several items coming up later on in the agenda.
Correct.
Okay. This calls for a public hearing. A public hearing has to do with, if you have any questions or concerns about repealing ordinance 1714 and other master street plan ordinances. Does anybody wish to speak? You'd like to sign in?
Yes, I am signing in, I'm Doris Anderson, do I need to go over there and talk?
You got to be close to the bike over there.
Hey, I'm Doris Anderson, I live at 2507 Bear Stead Drive, and I'm part of the reason that this ordinance exists. Former Mayor Harmon worked with us, we had numerous times when Brockington Road as a two lane and as a four lane was blocked on all four lanes. Two lanes and then two digits is not good. Four lanes and blocked all ways is either not good. So, as recently as last year, we had a child at a daycare right there at the corner of Maryland and Brockington Road. And first responders were trying to get to that child, that child was not breathing. They were within seconds of that child not being in the lab. Literally within seconds. Brockington was blocked all ways, and fire department just had to use their members to push people out of the way to get to that child. The child is allowed today because they need to get through. There are numerous occasions that Brockington Road is blocked, both lanes on one side, both lanes on another side. Last night, there was a major incident at Brockington and Keel. And that also impacts all the roads that, you know, from 107 all the way to Keel, it locks it up. There's 26,000 cars a day, move, in those two lanes. So that's double that. You've got 52,000 cars a day going and coming on that road. So you have to have emergency ingress and ingress. This easement you're talking about in place of the connector road is a good thing. It will prevent through traffic, just cutting through somewhere to get to another point just because they can. What I'd like to hear it as is a permanent easement with the property, such that it's recorded at the Plasky County Courthouse and stays with that property, so if it's not sold, developed, whatever happens to it later down the road, we have permanent emergency access through that parking lot structure area, whatever it turns out to be. I'm not against the development of the area. That's a good thing and a great thing for Sherwood, a great thing for the community. We don't want mini storage there. So, this is fabulous compared to mini storage. But we do need to have some type of emergency ingress and ingress that can, if the police, if the ambulance, if the fire department, it's not just fire safety, it's police getting through, ambulance getting through. It's a big issue for the area, because we have lots of churches, lots of daycares, lots of senior residence facilities, all on that side. They're not on the other side. They're all on that side. So that's why the road was proposed ever, you know, in the beginning. But it's really important that we have an ingress and ingress in the area. So if we have it as a permanent easement, a joint, attached to the property, that would be the best solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing now, called a public hearing closed. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, you want me to address that concern?
I think the time to address it is when we're talking about the plans of the site plan. Right now, what we're discussing is what to do about 1714.
Excellent.
Gentlemen?
I kind of agree with Doris, I think it'd be a good, just have the easement through there and working with it to keep those two, I'm a backer myself, I live back in that area.
Motion?
I agree. I'm rarely, I'm not down there much, so I'm not aware of any problems or blockages or things like that.
Well, you know, Brockton being what it is, I mean, limiting the driveways is the purpose of why it's built, so, I mean, that property needs a second layout, but it's truly a city maintenance rubber need.
Okay, I think we need a motion, and I suspect that the motion needs to be first to recommend that the council repeal the inventory, and to repeal other master street plan ordinances, and to recommend that the master street plan resolution to Vision 24 is the control. That's my suggestion, we have a motion.
Salute. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Rowan Mary Platt, blocks one and two for Horizon Edition, Austin Engineering Beijing. Shelby Stacey, City Planner, so within your staff reports, I know it's been a while, but the preliminary plat, so staff's analysis, the research behind it, we did acknowledge that the connection was there and that the preliminary plat did not include that connection, and that was intentional based on the discussion that was just had by James. So for technical purposes, that preliminary plat does meet the requirement of 4.1 and 4.3 of the subdivision rules of rights. So from a technical accuracy point, staff sees no issue with approval of that. It's for a two lot subdivision.
Okay, and this also needs to have an easement that we did not see.
That's correct. So as James just mentioned, part of that approved one, there's a series of contingencies he just went over. So prior to the approval of that preliminary plat and also of the site language we'll move into soon, it will have to delineate an expressly detailed emergency access easement. That will also, when it comes to the final planning stage, will be reported with the county clerk's office.
And the preliminary plat would not be signed until staff.
That is reflected, that's correct.
Yeah, so there's four recommended contingencies, approval subject to repeal of 1714, 371, 1736, 1818, 1896, and 2107 of the master street plan. Approval of a master street plan amendment to remove the local connector between Indian Bay Drive and Austin Bay Court from Vision Sherwood 2040. Approval of the preliminary plat would not be effective until those, or the site, this would also be recommended for the approval for the site plan as well. Effective until those things were accomplished, and the plat would reflect the easement prior to approval. And when you say the plat, so it's not just a recorded easement, it would go onto the final plat, which means anytime that anyone looks at that plat, they'll see that easement from another survey or somebody redevelops or, let's say, anything happens with that, it will be there in perpetuity for everybody's record.
So essentially, the earliest that this revised plat could be signed would be after the next council meeting in term.
Correct.
Have any questions?
Motion for the preliminary plat with the contingencies.
Second. A motion in a second, call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno? The rezon of lot one for Horizon Edition, Thomas Engineering.
The applicant is requesting to underline zoning of this property as C2, so they are requested a conditional use permit. Her ordinance 2025 nursing home facilities are allowed in the C2 zoning as a conditional use. So how we determine that on the initial conversation is in the back of the zoning code, the schedule of uses, and it's noted as a conditional use, and we access the standard industrial identification codes, it's from 1987, and delineate, sorry, I had to do that. It includes skilled nursing facilities, immediate care facilities, and nursing professional care facilities, not else classified, so that is encompassed in the senior assisted living facility. So staff sees no issues with the applicant's request to rezon the property as a C2 conditional use, and I would like to also note, this is only in reference to lot one. Lot two's going to remain undeveloped.
Okay, I will have questions, but first, calling, this calls for a public hearing, does anybody wish to speak to this? There being none, our whole public hearing closed. I guess my question is, is this a nursing home, or is it an assisted living?
It's an assisted living facility, and Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe 75 applicants, or 75 occupants, excuse me, is the max capacity that's permitted, it's a single story structure.
And that's considered in the SIC code of 1987?
Yes.
As a nursing home?
Yes, all in house.
Okay. Well, that's not actually a rezon, it's a conditional use, is that correct?
That's correct. Internally, that's our process, and so we have to follow, that's how it's worked.
Okay.
It's already a C2.
Correct, that'll go by as a C2, it's a conditional use permit request.
Process is the same, but I think if there is a, if there is a motion to approve, it must include the condition added to it that that easement, the part of, that there be an easement as a part of the condition.
That could be fair.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Do you have any questions? And we have a motion.
Motion to prove the conditional use with the permanent easement.
Second. Call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
A site plan in blocks one and two for Horizon Edition, Austin Engineering.
Okay, so the initial review and subsequent follow-up from the applicant, they submitted a schematic lane statement plan, which takes home to tact the, or one that abuts to the east side of the property, they're going to include the fencing and all the necessary buffer. We have received some phone calls, that's a great concern of residents, but we have assured them to provide a number of copies of what was submitted. The vehicular access around the proposed structure, the width was increased to 26 feet per conversations with the fire marshal. And then the engineering department did request the drainage analysis, which was submitted before, I'm happy to let Thomas speak further to that if there's any questions, because that lot two does lead into the flood plain.
Well, Doris, Thomas, kind of, Thomas, first of all, thanks for rescheduling this, we appreciate it, the time is kind of critical for us. Do you have any questions about the drainage? I'm getting the weeds about it, we're basically, we're just, we're taking all the drainage into the lower lot two, where it's kind of growing today, we're even reducing the amount of area flowing to the east, which is our neighbors, we're actually going to put more of water to the south, which will help out the neighbors to the east, you can ask specific questions? So, we feel good about the drainage?
Yeah, my question, so with the discussion of the easement and layout, where are you going to put the easement?
The easement will go along probably the east side, which means we'll have to move those dumpsters.
Yeah, that's what's, leads into, yeah.
Other than that, we're going to take it right down the east side.
And then?
Because the fire trucks got to be around us anyway.
Okay, you want to go down there. And what are you going to do when we get to the north property line with the fence?
We'll put, as far as, if the fencing on the south side of the parking lot?
Oh, the fence, there's a fence on the north property line that abuts a triangular piece.
Well, they're going to, he's going to come in, the fire trucks are going to come in on the driveway.
On the driveway.
Yeah, he'll come in on the driveway, just, we already have, he'll work his way south, across.
The easement's going to be down the middle of the parking lot there on the north side of the building, turn down the east side.
Yeah, dumpsters, and then there's a, well, there's not a fence on the south side?
No.
Okay, there would be different one in lots blocks, and all that would be required.
Right, easement, be covered, type like, of any kind?
Yeah, yeah, it's all, it would all be parking lot, that's what I was trying to make sure, easement would be something, have to be something like this.
And what happens, not that this is part of the site plan, but what happens on lot two?
Work until we develop it, when we develop it, lot two, whoever does, that same easement would have to continue subsequently.
Over time, too.
Lot two, there's.
You'd have to be on development.
Yeah. Okay, this calls for a public hearing, does anybody wish to speak to this? To the site plan, I don't think. Okay. Hearing none, called a public hearing closed. Are there any other questions or concerns? That's good. Is there a motion?
I've got questions, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you ask earlier on this.
Okay, and you are?
I signed in, is that, is that?
For the record, your name?
My name is Angie Manick, I live at 6964 W. Place, and my property abuts right up to the east side of this property, that is the east side, right? So I'm sorry, I don't know much about any of this, I had to research to find anything out, because I wasn't given a letter, because our address was listed incorrectly, and that's neither here nor there, but, I see on here, it has a wood fence and a chain link fence, and I wanted some clarification on this, because, you know, wood rots. And we just got done replacing our fence at our house, because it's rotted, and, you know, there's a, what is it, a 25 foot green space that you guys are allowing up to our home, which isn't going to be much, I think it's going to pretty much be right where our fence is, I mean, ideally, according to this, where your fence is, or whatever, is pretty much right where our fence is, it looks like. And again, I'm just coming on that side, trying to figure this out. Is there not any way, instead of a wood fence that's going to rot in 10 years, you know, with it being so wet, we can get concrete wall, or brick, or something there, so that it's not so, you know, eyesore up next to us? We're on a cul-de-sac, and that's all we're going to see. And we're going to hear dumpsters being dumped, and, you know what I'm saying? Is that possible? I mean, I.
Thomas, you might want to respond to that first place, you said the dumpsters are being moved.
That's right, but they'll, they'll just be moved over to the east just a bit, since they'll be still in the back.
Okay, still make cover, left.
They'll be moved west, just a little bit.
You've got no room to go east?
No, I'm not going east. They'll still be on the southeast, they'll still be on the southeast corner.
We promised not to put it.
As far as Spencer, we'd like to stick with the, that's pretty common, pretty practiced in the tree of the forest, but we'd like to stick with that.
And I assume that the property owner would not want that to deteriorate and would replace it if it was required.
Yeah, if it's required, yeah, we'll, yes, we'll replace it, keep the property up, keep me responsible about it.
Okay, and what is this chain link fence that I'm seeing on here?
Maybe you have a, on the east side, we're proposing nothing but a wooden fence.
There must be an, I read it as an invisible one.
There may be an existing one out there?
Yeah, I read it.
No, there's no fence, it's woods. But it, I mean, on my, what I'm seeing on.
Oh, there's an existing chain link fence out there, but we're going to build a brand new wooden fence on our property.
Okay, well, we don't have a fence there, so it just says on here, chain link fence, new wood fence, and retaining wall, so I, I'm not much certain what that is, so, but there's not going to be any chain link fence there, okay? And is it, I see the shrubbery here, the wood fence goes all the way back.
The entirety of our east side.
Okay.
Does the property of 6965 not have a chain link fence? Looks like it does in a, like maybe a black one?
I'm not certain.
Yeah, that's, where you see chain link fence appears to be 6965, be the last house on the left?
Okay.
At the end of Order B Place.
Okay.
What'd you say your name is?
6964. I have a chain or cedar fence up, so it's not mine. I'm just concerned about, you know, what's going to go up at the end of that cul-de-sac there, so I wasn't sure about the chain link part, but that corresponds my question, I know what to ask further, thank you for clarification, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Gentlemen? You need a motion?
Motion to approve the site plan as a meaning with the easement and dumpster changes discussed.
Second? Call.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Under old business, we have a report from staff about operations of the commission last year.
Yes, so I want to take a quick, I'd like to just give you a summary from twenty twenty-two about some of the planning commission, and I'm just going to read them out quickly. Okay? We have three re-flats, nine preliminary flats, and seven file flats, eight site plans, eight rezonies, two conditional uses, one zoning code amendment, one signed variance, two special exceptions, five lanes, plan amendments, and one variance. Pretty busy year. There you go.
This is as busy a planning commission as for a city this size as I've seen. Okay, under new business, the mayor has suggested that we consider the possibility of meeting at five o'clock instead of six o'clock. I was real close. I was thinking of East Coast. To meet at six, like the city council does, instead of the five o'clock that we've been meeting for several years now, because it was not on the agenda, it's not something we can vote on tonight. And besides, the bylaws require that it be brought up to the commission at a meeting prior to when a, the amendment is, to the bylaws is actually enacted. So tonight, I think what I would like is if, that's some discussion about whether you have concerns about a later start date, or if you want to keep it, what's your progress?
I remember we used to meet at seven o'clock. And then we moved it to five o'clock because, uh, well, mainly people.
Seven, that means you're going into nine and nine.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is. One thing about, uh, uh, meeting at five o'clock is, of course, all the attorneys and contractors, developers have to leave work a little bit early, get here at five. I'm retired, I can do that, so.
Doesn't matter to me either way, just don't make it mean later than seven.
What? You got no preference?
Neither one, neither one's done with me.
Okay, I, I am something.
You want me to tell the, kind of the, the reason?
Sure.
Um, so we're looking for a, it would be a lot easier for not only the, your attorneys and so forth, but also for your public to be able to, if they want to voice a concern about a project or be for a concern about a project, it would make it a whole lot easier because as we know, most of our residents do not work, surely they work a lot, so it's very difficult to get to a five o'clock meeting. And also, kind of the goal is that all of our committee, commissions, meetings, city council, everything be at, at six o'clock in the council chambers so that it's a lot easier to remember. And people will know if it's a city meeting, it'll be at six o'clock and the location unless we say otherwise. So it's just to make things easier for the community. That's why I said.
So basically, it's bracketing seven to five.
I think six o'clock is good.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, it would be fair to say that a straw pole here by the commission is sufficient grounds to bring it up and vote on it next month?
Yes.
Okay, and under the circumstances?
No adjustment to the date of the voting.
Five weeks. And I would propose that our next meeting be scheduled at six o'clock, and we will at that time vote on it. Okay?
What's for me? Do you?
All right.
Kevin, is there any other, Mr. Mr. Chairman?
I, I wanted to let y'all know, uh, next month, we'll be bringing for discussion a draft access management plan for the future improvements for Jacksonville Pato Road. In some discussions about sort of finalizing the plans, we realized it'd be real great if we had some driveway standards, median brake standards for that since it's such a tremendous investment for the, for the community, I think. Again, preserving that, the function of that program will be, will be important. Another is the young-looking gentleman out here is Finley, Finley Benson. I, I, I know him all now. We're, we're good friends, but he's our.
Used to be.
Yeah. But he, he is helping out in the city engineer.
Nice to meet all of you.
And as mayor, I'm very appreciative of them both. So as far as I'm concerned, we got the A team, so.
You've got two former city economic ladies.
Oh, dear. I guess I was absolutely shocked with that access management plan way back two thousand nine, whenever it was, had never been adopted.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Never was it. I guess it's kind of time to get on that. We, we will resurrect that as well. Okay. Take a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second? Call.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
You are all welcome to stay. We will be here to call a meeting of the board of zoning adjustments, but you can leave if you wish. Is it?
Yes, it needs to be reported as well.
Yeah, you think I'd hear better? Yeah. I was actually researching. What are you doing? Cat for the kid. Where they done it for thirty-five?
Call a meeting of the board of zoning adjustment, January eighteenth. Again, this is not a call meeting. It's a continuation or a rescheduling of the one that had to be canceled earlier this month. Call the roll.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Uh, you've received a copy of.
Is that right?
I don't think so.
The only meeting we had in twenty twenty-two was.
That is right, yeah, that's right, okay.
Okay.
The January minute. January twenty twenty-two minute.
We're only four and a half minutes.
I know. Okay. Okay, are there any questions or amendments? Motion approved.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Election of chairman.
Nominate Rob Milton.
Did you hear the whistle of that train? Yep. Call the roll.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Rob Stein.
Bruno.
Aye.
Election of vice chairman.
Nominate a vice president.
Second? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed, call the roll.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Stein.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
A variance request of seventeen ninety-one square feet for an accessory structure located at nine of Fort Trangle, Jason Mitchell, Hona. This item, the applicant has requested to take one from February.
Do you need a motion for that? Motion table.
Second? Call the roll.
Gillen.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Is there any old business? Under new business, we want to discuss the bylaws, basically the same discussion that we had for the planning commission, only, the, the only real difference is, I mean, the requirements and the process is the same. We have to discuss it at this point and in effect introduce it and then take it up at the next meeting, which means we will be having a meeting in February, so that's when we would vote on it and requires a vote of four commissioners. So nobody should not show up. Hold the commission, does anybody have a concern about meeting at six instead of five